Thank you. I'd like to start by calling this meeting to order. Uh, can we please start off with the roll call?
Okay, Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have three proclamations to start at the meeting.
Okay, the first is Sikh Heritage Day. Whereas Sikhism is a religion founded in the Punjab region of South Asia over five centuries ago, and introduced to the United States in the 19th century. Whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest world religion, with approximately 25 million adherents from diverse backgrounds throughout the world, including 500,000 adherents in the United States. And whereas Sikh Americans have made important contributions to the social, economic, and cultural fabric of our city, and continue to make strides towards securing religious liberty as patriotic members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas Sikhs in the United States pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the economic vibrancy of the United States as farmers, engineers, doctors, scientists, and business owners. And whereas Renton, one of the most multicultural cities in the area, and home to people from all over the world, prides itself on being a city where people of all faith and cultures are welcome, respected, and able to live in harmony with each other. And whereas during the month of April, the Sikh community celebrates Vaisakhi, also known as Kalsa Day, which marks the beginning of the harvest season and the Sikh New Year. And whereas Vaisakhi is one of the most religiously significant days in Sikh history, commemorating the creation of the Kalsa, a fellowship of devout Sikhs by Guru Gobin Singh in 1699. And whereas events such as this celebrate the rich cultures and traditions that contribute to the unique character of our city. Now therefore, I am Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 13th, 2021 to be Sikh Heritage Day in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2021. Signed, Mayor Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, President Corman.
I move the council to concur in the proclamation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by President Corman and seconded by Councilmember McIrvin that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And here to accept the proclamation is Renton's own Ruby Rehal, the Sikh community.
Hi, good evening, Councilmembers. Um, I just want to thank you for doing the proclamation. I, first of all, want to thank the Councilmember Kim Vaughn. She's been amazing, approachable. You know, her and I were having conversation, and she just really brought up, like, what's important to you? And this is how we kind of went upon doing this. Um, Vaisakhi is coming up, it's on Tuesday. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we're not going to have a big celebration like we would every year. Um, but if anyone wants, we're having a COVID-friendly celebration on Saturday in federal way, uh, just so our kids kind of, you know, get to celebrate and are still familiar with what Vaisakhi is. Um, so I really appreciate this, the community in Renton appreciates, um, you guys doing this, and thank you for all your hard work. Uh, and I think, I'm not sure if you're able to add, Borjod is also in the meeting. I'm not sure if they can add him, he wanted to say a few words as well. I'm not sure if that's an option.
Uh, possibly, let's see. There we go. Borjod.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmembers, appreciate, uh, the apology. And I just want to thank you from everybody, uh, from Sikh community all over, uh, for this proclamation. Truly appreciate it, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you both for joining us tonight very much.
Hey, are we ready for the second proclamation, sir?
Next, we have the Arbor Day, Earth Day proclamation.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the City of Renton has been recognized as a Tree City USA since 2008 by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees reduce soil erosion, produce life-giving oxygen, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business districts, improve wildlife and fish habitats, and contribute many other benefits. And whereas in 1970, Senator Gaylord Nelson introduced legislation designating a day in April as a national day to celebrate the earth and called it Earth Day. And whereas volunteers from neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and service clubs will have the opportunity to help the City of Renton celebrate Arbor Day and Earth Day later in the year at a city-sponsored event. But for now, city staff will mark the occasion on Friday, April 30th, by planting trees to help restore and beautify the urban forest. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 to be Arbor Day, Earth Day in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to observe the occasion in their own way and consider planting trees where they live. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the City of, the seal of Renton, cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move the council to concur in the proclamation.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McIrvin, that the council, um, adopt the proclamation as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And to accept the proclamation tonight, we have Urban Forestry and Natural Resource Manager, Ian Gray. Ian.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you very much. Um, really appreciate all that you do. And hopefully in return, we'll have a volunteer event later on this year, once we're out of COVID. We can finally get some trees planted and get you guys out there with your spiffy Arbor Day t-shirts and, uh, do some more tree planting. So I look forward to that. Uh, we'll keep you posted, probably sometime in the fall, uh, we'll finally get that going. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Ian. Okay, next up, uh, is our final proclamation. It's recognition of public safety and telecommunications.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas the federal government's standard occupational classification system, S.O.C.S., classifies workers into occupational categories for statistical purposes based upon the nature of the work performed, and in some cases, based upon the skills, education, or training needed to perform the work. And whereas America's 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators, P.S.T., are categorized in the S.O.C.S. as an Office and Administrative Support Occupation, a category including secretarial staff and clerical workers. And whereas classifying P.S.T.s as Protective Service Occupation alongside police, firefighters, security guards, lifeguards, and others whose job it is to protect our communities, would better reflect the work they perform and align the S.O.C.S. with related classification systems. And whereas on March 7th, 2019, the 911 Saves Act, a bipartisan bill to reclassify 911 P.S.T.s to Protective Service Occupation stalled in the legislative process. And whereas nine states currently consider 911 P.S.T.s as first responders, and the Washington State 911 Community is actively working to introduce similar legislation in Olympia. And whereas the City of Renton is served by Valley Communications Center 911, known as Valleycom 911, whose P.S.T.s are highly-trained professionals working under a uniquely stressful environment and handling over 616,000 phone calls and over 472,000 dispatchable calls for a service year. And whereas Valleycom 911 P.S.T.s are the first of the first responders, providing life-saving, pre-arrival instructions, triage, mediation, de-escalation, and a calm presence on the telephone and radio that is focused on both responder and public safety. And whereas recognizing our 911 P.S.T.s for the critical role in emergency response cannot and should not wait for the passage of the 911 Saves Act. And we believe that these local actions will help support and further similar legislation that 911 P.S.T.s deserve. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim that 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators at Valley Communications Center 911 are recognized and elevated to the status of first responders who serve our community. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, President, uh, Council President Corman.
I move the council to concur in the proclamation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McIrvin, that the council concur with the proclamation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, my piece of paper says we have no recipient, but I see Laura Yuland with us, so, very nice. Laura.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, thank you so much for this proclamation. I am, as you know, Executive Director at Valleycom 911, but also a very proud Renton resident for the last 38 years, so thank you for this. Um, our telecommunications, this week, we celebrate them during National Telecommunicator Week. So to have this proclamation at this time is absolutely perfect. Um, we will continue to seek federal reclassification to the Protective Service Occupation, which is a much better fit. Um, you know the life-saving service that our telecommunications provide each and every day, 1,700 phone calls on average a day. That's a lot of trauma to work through. Um, we appreciate your support. We appreciate, um, the working together that the city and Valleycom does. And just thank you so much for this proclamation. We're going to frame them and put them up in the center.
Thank you very much, Laura. Appreciate it, the vital work they do. Okay, next up, we have administrative report.
So I'll be reading that tonight. Uh, so first up, we have, uh, on April 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., the Renton Police Department will be sponsoring a Shred-a-thon and prescription drug takeback at Renton Memorial Stadium, 405 Logan Avenue South. The community will have the opportunity to have sensitive documents shredded and disposed of unused, uh, and dispose of unused and expired medications. This will be a no-contact, drive-through event, so please have your documents and prescriptions placed in your trunk, hatchback, or truck bed before arriving. They will also be accepting canned foods or dry goods, as well as monetary donations to benefit the Renton Salvation Army Food Bank. More information can be found at rentonwa.gov/shredathon. The basketball court at Teasdale Park will be cordoned off until midsummer for repairs. Please keep yourselves in the public safe by continuing to follow COVID-19 protocols while in parks and on trails. Practice good hygiene, keep safe distances, limit unnecessary exposures, and wear face coverings. For updated information, visit rentonwa.gov/parks or contact Community Services at 425-430-6600. And finally, information about preventive, uh, street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll open up a remote audience comment period. As always, it remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a Sikh staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker, uh, you have been unmuted. This is the speaker's queue that is their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speaker should be able to see the timer on the screen. Please finish your comments when you see the timer is supposed to expire. And do we have any, uh, anybody signed up?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, no one signed up in advance to speak, but I do see a hand raised. Uh, if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address council, please use your computer to raise your hand. The first person that we have is Sylvia Coria Centeno. Sylvia, go ahead.
Hi there, Councilmembers. Thank you for listening and thank you for having this session. As you know, having your constituents' voices on these calls is incredibly important. And I would really like to thank you for having that opportunity. And so, to begin with, my name is Sylvia, and I am from the east side of Renton, and so I am one of your constituents. And I'm here today in regards to talking about the recent rise of Asian hate crimes and the importance that this issue really has to me. And I know you guys are aware of it. Thank you for having that recent proclamation and solidarity with it. But I really want this to get more attention. And so to begin with, I know we all know here that Renton is an incredibly diverse city, and we pride ourselves in that diversity of our cities and our towns, of those friendly black and brown faces that we see on the streets. But yet, we can't just merely celebrate this diversity and not work towards that actual inclusion and making sure that that diversity is respected and that it is upheld in every level possible, meaning that we have to actively work towards the anti-racism. Because so many Asian families right now do not feel safe, whether if it's walking in the streets, whether if it's doing daily tasks such as grocery stores, at the extent where now escorts are needed and are being requested, at the extent where families don't know who to turn to anymore, whether if that's law enforcement, or whether if that's community groups, because they simply don't know who are their effective allies and who are the people that are acting on behalf of their voices. And the worst part is that there's been so little action towards this, where we get message of solidarity, but we don't have those actual policies, those initiatives to work towards not only shunning those hate crimes, but also enacting the comfort, the support, and the empowerment of the community themselves. As I work with youth across Washington State, I hear their experiences. Because this is not just impacting older people or adults who watch the news, but this is inevitably impacting everybody who is a part of that community. And it's also impacting the allies here who are in distress about so little action being upheld, not just by our city councils, but our governments, and also the nation, ignoring the issue and letting it die down, when this is the moment when we have to act most passionately. What I ask for you guys is to listen to the AAPI voice, to hear their experiences, and to hear exactly what they believe needs to happen within our city. Because I'm speaking on behalf of an ally, being a BIPOC Latina person. And so then, I will never understand the experience, the fear of the current events going on right now with the Asian community. Which is why it is imperative for you to listen to them, to hear them, and to understand exactly what your action items should be. This can be through a town hall. This can be to reaching out to organizations themselves and seeing exactly what they need. But we need that collaborative community effort. Because without it, how can we hold ourselves responsible as community members that truly care and want to empower our community members? I hope you really take this message into heart, because we should not let this die down. And we really should be working towards that anti-racism with all communities, including, and especially right now, the community so heavily impacted being that Asian community. Thank you for listening, and thank you for having these town hall meetings again.
The next person we have is Victoria Doe. Victoria, go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak today and having this time. I am Victoria Doe. I am a resident of South Seattle, and I am calling in to raise awareness about what's happening to our AAPI community. I was a resident of Renton back in 2015 and have spent lots of time working there the past three years at my nonprofit job. I've had the chance to meet several of the council members here today. Um, some of you have come out to our cancer walks and events. Um, so, I'm excited to be able to speak with you and really hope that, um, this is an opportunity to learn and listen. I'm calling in from South Seattle, but this issue, you know, it's in Renton, it's King County, it's across the U.S., and I'm calling in from the perspective of a, um, daughter of immigrants who came from Vietnam. And as we've heard this past year, there's been an increase on attacks to our Asian-American community. And it's what's happening everywhere. I know, uh, most of you probably know about the, uh, the woman who yelled a racial slur to an Asian-American man right here in Renton, and the schoolteacher getting attacked in our Seattle International District. It is definitely terrifying on top of everything else that we've been experiencing this year. I'm fearful for my older relatives. I'm fearful for elderly Asian-American neighbors that I see out on my morning runs, who are going on their walk. I'm just scared of what might happen next. In our community, uh, Asian-American community, respecting and honoring our elders is so important, it's part of our culture. So it breaks my heart that, uh, not only just Asian-Americans, but especially our, our elders are being the target of these unwarranted attacks. Um, so with all this, I've been saddened to see the increase in hate crimes and calling in to see more action from our elected officials. I would love to see the Renton City Council condemn all forms of racism, hate speech, and bias um, towards the rise in Asian-American hate crimes. And I would also love to see the Renton City Council put more action towards having this be a priority and showing that this is something that's an important top-of-list um, by holding a town hall to address Asian hate crimes and to work with different community-based organizations to, um, collaborate on how we can track these hate crimes and also work together to co-create, uh, better community-based solutions for public safety. And, uh, last but not least, I would love the Renton Council to put together a plan to address these hate crimes and actively listen to the AAPI community. Thank you.
The next person we have is Anson Pong. Anson, go ahead.
Hello, Councilmembers. Uh, thank you for having me here today. My name is Anson Pong. I use he/him pronouns. And I am a resident of Renton, living in Talbot Hill. Um, and I'm also the precinct community member for Renton 0990. And I'm calling in to discuss public safety in regards to BIPOC communities. Um, like the speakers before me citing the rise in Asian hate crimes by 150% in the last year. Something about this current public safety model isn't working. These rise in Asian hate crimes is coupled with injustices faced by many BIPOC communities. Uh, we've seen over the summer, just series of Black Lives Matter protests, and very little has been done. Just yesterday, Daunte Wright in Minnesota was murdered because a police officer mistaked a handgun for a taser? That's just, that's just unacceptable. So I want to challenge you, Councilmembers, to consider alternatives to public safety. Consider that public safety is getting resources in the communities that need it the most. Consider getting the community involved in discussions of what public safety means to them. Consider asking around, getting perspectives from BIPOC community members and other marginalized, uh, people, from, um, all sorts of communities. And ask them, like, what does public safety mean to you? And I challenge you, create a task force that envisions a public safety that works for all of these communities. Because we've seen how our current public safety, uh, model has led to a 150% rise in Asian hate crimes and so many marginalized identities being, you know, continually being, um, just disproportionately hurt. So I just want to challenge you all to really consider alternatives and imagine a public safety model that works for everyone.
The next person we have is Dawn Cheng. Dawn, go ahead.
Hi, Renton City Councilmembers. My name is Dawn, and I use she/her pronouns. And I have been a resident of Renton for the past 20 years, specifically the Renton Highlands neighborhood. And I've been here since I moved here from middle school. And, um, it, Renton is definitely home for me. Um, and I am here today to also, as the other people before me, to address the AAPI hate crimes that have been happening. Um, because I call Renton home, um, you know, home is not something that I take lightly. It's not just a place where my parents and my family and I have a physical home that's located here, and just because our zip code is here, it means family. And I, it's not just my immediate family, my entire, um, extended family lives in Renton too. When my parents immigrated here from Hong Kong, um, they decided to settle here. And, um, shortly after, my grandparents came here to take care of me. My aunts also moved here, and now we all live within a 15-minute parameter to each other. And, you know, growing, you know, I didn't think anything of it, but it's something very special that my family and I have, just to all live in the same city. And we love living here, um, being so close to each other. It's especially great now because my grandparents are in their 90s, and, um, we love being able to be close so we can take care of them. Um, and because of that, you know, I ask you to think about, what do you think about when you think about home? What is home, Alyssa, what does home mean to you? For me, home means that it's a place of comfort, love, and safety. And I really want to emphasize that last word of safety. Um, because even though I've been really enjoyed and loved living here recently, it hasn't felt like home, because I do not feel safe. My grandparents used to take morning walks, they lived by the Goodwill, um, if you guys know where that is. And they used to take their morning walks there. I also used to drive by there. I used to drive by and park at the Renton Park and Ride and see them, and give them a wave in the morning, and it was this really beautiful moment of seeing them walk down the street while I drove to work. And now, they can't. Something so simple, as in their daily walks, they're 90 years old. This is something they really look forward to. They cannot do anymore because they do not feel safe. I do not feel safe letting my grandparents walk. How sad is that? I want you to think how carefully, how sad that is, that my grandparents can't enjoy something so simple. Additionally, on February 14th, there was a video titled Racist Robin, which I am sure you have all watched. And I go to a kickboxing studio right down that street. I walk down that street three times a week to go to kickboxing. And I go there for self-care, I go there to support Renton businesses. I go there because I love the instructor who owns that business. However, now when I walk there, I do not feel safe. I have pepper spray, I have a personal alarm. I go to that kickboxing class now not because I want to exercise, I go there because I need to learn self-defense. And what happened, what Racist Robin did, that could have been me, because I literally walk down that street three times a week. And I want you to think about that. It could have just not been that person that drove by, it could have been a constituent of your city. So my action items for you are to please host a town hall. Please listen to us, please listen to the people, not only in Renton City, but the people who know how to help other members of this community. I want you to provide more education around AAPI issues, especially as we approach AAPI Heritage Month. I think it's a great time for you all to show up and do something that is actually, we can see, and that we can hear, and we know that our voices are heard, and we are valued members of your community and of the city. And lastly, I really want you to put into action how you're going to respond to incidents that happen. When the Racist Robin incident happened, nothing, I heard nothing. I was shook, and I was shaken to my core because it really could have happened to me at any moment. And to, for it not to be addressed is really hurtful. And it really doesn't, again, make me feel safe. So I really, really hope you hear me, because I love living here, and I want to make this place feel like home again for me. And that starts with me feeling safe and others feeling safe, especially the Asian people in residents of Renton. Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so next up, we have the consent agenda. There's four items for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
Uh, I'd like to ask, would any council members like any of the four items you moved for individual consideration? Seeing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McIrvin, that the consent agenda be adopted as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have unfinished business. President Corman.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
The Planning and Development Committee has committed a report.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee, Committee Report. A resolution to pool SHB 1406 Sales Tax Credit Funds with the South King Housing, uh, South King Housing and Homeless Partners, AKA Skip. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to, one, consider and act on a proposed resolution regarding pooling SHB 1406 Sales Tax Credit Funds with Skip. Authorize the mayor to join Skip's 2021 inter-local agreement and execute the companion agreement regarding such pooling once city staff have received written confirmation that the 2021 ILA is in effect, the details of which will be addressed in the pooling resolution. And three, by June 15th, 2022, have staff provide an update and recommendation on continued pooling for 2023 onward. on continued pooling for 2023 onwards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Prince. So when we, we had this come before us in April of last year, council was really, really wanted to make sure it came back to us. And so I again like to thank staff for taking our recommendations and putting them into action. And with that, I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And next up, we have Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now we have, I know Councilmember Halloran's busy. Councilmember Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Although I have been told that this is not a record, the Finance Committee has nine committee reports this evening.
Are we sure about that? I think it might be a record.
I think it's a record. I thought they said 12 was the record.
Okay, well, here we go. So the first report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment of $5,799,472.61 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers and two wire transfers, and payroll total payment of $1,408,075.46 for payroll vouchers that include 560 direct deposits. This is the March 1st through 15th pay period.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
All right, next is a, an agreement with the Washington State Department of Health for the SNAP incentive agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve amendment to, to the 2020 Washington State Department of Health Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP incentive agreement, to accept an additional $22,000 in funding for the Renton Farmers Market for April 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is regarding a grant for the Fitlot Outdoor Exercise Equipment. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the grant agreement for $11,030 with Fitlot, subject to approval as informed by the city attorney department, and allocate the grant funds to the city's Renton, City of Renton's Recreation and Neighborhood Division.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next is regarding the Sunset Neighborhood Park Notice of Grant. The executed $500,000 Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Agreement stipulates that a notice of grant be recorded to ensure that the present and future use of the Sunset Neighborhood Park Tax Lot 7227-801300 and Tax Lot 7227-801400, lest the regional stormwater facility will remain a park and continue to function as intended per the grant agreement in perpetuity. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the notice of grant and record the notice of grant with King County.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next report is also regarding the Sunset Neighborhood Park, this time for a deed of right. In 2018, the city entered into a grant agreement to receive $500,000 in federal grant monies. The deed of right is required by the State Recordation and Conservation Office for and in consideration of monies coming in whole or in part from the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund account. The deed is recorded to ensure that the present and future use of the acquisition funds funded parcels are and shall remain in public use in perpetuity. Parcel 7, Tax Lot 7227-801300 was acquired with grant funding. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the deed of right and record the deed of right with King County.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a grant from King County's Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Transform Senior Centers Grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the grant agreement for $112,000, which is $56,000 in 2021 and $56,000 in 2022 with King County's Department of Community and Human Services for Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy Funds, subject to approval as informed by the city attorney department and allocate the grant funds to the City of Renton Recreation and Neighborhood Division.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is regarding an agreement extension with the Alfred Group for the Family First Community Center. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve addendum one to contract agreement 2006-1 with the Alfred Group for consulting services during the course of construction of the Family First Community Center. The contract would then expire on June 30th, 2022. The committee further recommends ratification of the original agreement in the amount of $140,000 for the purposes of providing as-needed services related to the coordination and adherence to terms of grants and donations during the construction of the Family First Community Center.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
So the Alfred Group was able to help us bridge the gap for the last $4 million for the Family First Community Center. And this is just such an awesome win for our community. And with that, I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is regarding a resolution for the authorizing a sole-source vendor, I think it's called Furnitubes International Limited, for the procurement of proprietary Bell bollards. So the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to obtain approval to, one, adopt the resolution thereby waiving the state competitive bidding requirements under RCW 3523-3529 and RCW 3904-282A, and utilize Furnitubes International Limited in London, England, as a sole-source vendor to purchase Bell 100 vehicular bollards for the traffic safety program. Additionally, two, authorize the mayor and/or public works administrator to enter into purchase orders with Furnitubes International Limited as needed for city public works projects requiring bollards.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final Finance Committee report is regarding proprietary signal equipment and traffic calming system devices. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the purchase of proprietary signal equipment from Western Systems and traffic calming system devices from Zumar Industries, totaling $228,848.64 using state bid contract number 04616. The cost of the equipment and devices will be charged to the Safe Routes to Transit Program budget number 317123009 and reimbursed by King County Metro as outlined in agreement, contract 20-156.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I move the council concur with this final Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with this final committee report from the Finance Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Halloran?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Sepp.
Thank you. I'm almost done. Few more things, lot of reading.
Mr. Sepp, you have been thanked.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti?
No new business, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
There you go. Councilmember Van?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have legislation. We have two resolutions and one ordinance for second and final reading.
Okay, the resolution is regarding the sole-source agreement for the downtown Ballard project. So a resolution, the City of Renton, Washington, finding that the sole-source exemptions under RCW 3523-3529 and RCW 3904-282A apply to procurement of proprietary materials, therefore waiving the state competitive bidding requirement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk and/or public works administrator to enter into purchase orders with Furnitubes International Limited for the city public works projects requiring bollards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corbin?
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved by President, Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember Halloran, that the council adopt the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution is regarding the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners pooling of funds. So a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, in response to Washington State Substitute House Bill 1406, SHB 1406 codified as RCW 8214540, one, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to cause the city to join an interlocal agreement with the cities of Auburn, Burying, Covington, Des Moines, Federal Way, Kent, Normandy Park, and Taquilla entitled Interlocal Agreement for the Purpose of Pooling Sales Tax Receipts with South King Housing and Homeless Partners, Skip Cities, to administer funds under RCW 8214540 by authorizing the mayor and city clerk to, at a future date, enter into an interlocal agreement entitled Companion Agreement for the Purpose of Pooling Sales Tax Receipts with South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, Skip Cities, to administer funds under RCW 8214540. And two, authorizing the mayor or designee to transfer SHB 1406 funds to the South King Housing and Homeless Partners, Skip, for purposes of pooling.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Prince?
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Council President Corbin, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, we have an ordinance for second and final reading requiring a roll call. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, reorganizing Chapter 3-1 of the Renton Municipal Code by moving the city clerk's office to the executive department and adding the Emergency Services Division to the executive department by moving subsection 345(c), city clerk office, to section 314 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending the language and renaming it City Clerk Division, adding a new section 318, Emergency Management Division, to chapter 31 of the Renton Municipal Code, and repealing subsection 345(c) of the Renton Municipal Code, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Halloran?
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran and seconded by Council President Corbin, that the ordinance be adopted as read. It requires a roll call.
Hey, Council President Corbin?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti?
Aye.
Councilmember Van?
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We are on to new business. Council President Corbin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one meeting to announce. For, it's committed a whole meeting next Monday, April 19th, at 6 o'clock PM. One, it'll be a video conference, one item on the agenda, and it's community services, recreation update, the strategic plan, and cost recovery. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to announce the second one, one after that? The council meeting?
Oh, yeah. I just never remember whether we're supposed to do that enough. Sometimes I do and sometimes I don't. For standing meetings, I don't remember. But anyways, yes, there will be a meeting afterwards, 7 o'clock PM, council meeting, video conference, just like tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce the Transportation Movement